Many school districts, he has been, he has been advising us as well as obviously the St. Louis County Health Department. And so I think as far as, as what it looks like to exclude a child from school based on illness and what it looks like to re-admit a student based on, you know, previous illness will be things that we're continuing to shape up in consultation with medical professionals. So, and that, you know, again, I think it's part of why Ed Rich is on this call and part of the deliberations that the school board has been having in our public meetings around the acknowledgement that we're going to need additional and very targeted communications to families and to students who are old enough to kind of take responsibility for their own health as well around again, this isn't going to be something that you only hear, you know, once at the beginning of school. You know, as, as the kids walk in the door, that these will be messages that we continue to share that may continue to be slightly tweaked and updated as the, you know, as the medical information becomes more clear. So, so yeah, thank you for raising that. And we absolutely are, are sure that we will have some specificity on that for you as well in the coming weeks.
Ms. Gifford asked a question regarding can we get face shields for staff? And I know that there's been discussion about face masks and I believe we had a presentation on the wearing of face masks before it became mandatory. Though I don't recall us talking about face shields though. Ed, if you know anything about that, or Katie, you may have some insight that I don't.
Yeah, um, I know in the administrative calls, especially Dr. Hebenstreich has been looking into the, the medical advice around face shields, you know, kind of those, those plastic clear plastic masks that, that could be worn. I think with the that we think especially for our early childhood center that being able to see a teacher's face and interact with them potentially in a, in a more, in a less obstructed sort of way is, is important. Again, I, I think it's a, it's a great question, Kim. I think it is something we are considering and reviewing and again, making sure that we're placing the health and safety of our staff high on that list, but also making sure we're facilitating the learning of our students. Actually, in my day job, just got a a message this morning about some research actually specific to face shields, which I'll be sharing with the admin team as well as, as we make our deliberations. So thanks for, for raising that. I think we're, we're obviously still learning a lot about what kind of personal protective equipment is necessary and, and will serve us the best.
We have a question from Siobhan Nunn, and it's what parent education will you be providing related to mask wearing students? But I, I hate to point you, Siobhan, but I'm going to. Can, can you, okay, what's this? Sorry. Siobhan, do you mind like kind of telling us what, what you would like to see or what you would think would be helpful for parents? Is it possible, Katie, can we? Is Siobhan able to talk with us?
I, I just unmuted her. Yeah, I think that should hopefully be okay.
You're totally putting me on the spot today, Mr. Bywell.
What would the PTO like to see?
Um, that, that's, I, I don't know. My concern is that we're going to have some folks who are adamantly against it and have been and that conversations, those conversations are probably being overheard by our students who are going to be coming back in the fall. So it's, it's a big loaded political question right now where it should just be a medical question. So I, I, I don't know in all honesty. But I think we need to make sure that whatever policies that are put in place that you have some good for and that that information gets back to not just the students, but also the parents. With, with hardline guidance, I think there are folks out there unfortunately who are using the, that I have a medical condition and I can't wear a mask as an excuse when they don't actually have an issue with that. So my concern would be that there would be some folks trying to use that also. I know that, you know, I'm, I'm in a situation where I'm taking care of my mom who's immune compromised. So the mask wearing is a big deal for me. And I know the, the safety of all of our students and all of our staff is a big issue for all of you guys. So I just, I'm just concerned about that.
Okay.
Any answers at this point, so.
That's okay. I, thank you, because I wasn't sure if you were asking about like how to wear face masks properly? Or, yeah, so, so your response really gives some clarification to me. So I appreciate you for that. So really, I think your question is kind of aligned on with Mr. Homo Nick. And that you all are trying to understand or make sure that it's clear to everyone what consequences will be in place if masks are not worn. Is that right? Okay.
Well, the that there's not, there's not wiggle room. That this is something that's going to be done, period, end of discussion.
Yeah.
And they're going to be worn properly. They're not going to be hanging off your ears. They're not going, you're not going to be walking around with your nose sticking out. You're going to wear your mask the way they are intended to be worn. Where and when they're intended to be worn. I guess that's my, just making sure that that's just.
Yeah, that's, I, I pre, yeah, I also appreciate that clarification, Siobhan. I think I originally read it too. Folks wanting, folks maybe needing to, what's, what's the, the proper way to wear a mask? Like, I just don't even know as opposed to, again, the, the education on why we're, why we're doing this, why it, you know, why precautions are, are required. And, you know, I certainly again, want to acknowledge for folks that masks I think are the most visible precaution that, you know, a lot of folks are taking. And obviously has been mandated by St. Louis County. But we have been using the, the Swiss cheese metaphor.
Absolutely.
The idea that there are, are multiple precautions that, you know, the, the distancing, you know, keeping students in staple groups, increasing the amount of disinfection that is happening in the buildings and things like that. So, so yes, I mean, I think we will be communicating about all of that. We will be communicating regularly about the importance of all those things. And I frankly would, would guess that the, that the six feet distancing is going to be the harder thing to to get our kids to, you know, be, be trying to, to enforce in, in some settings as opposed to, you know, the, the challenges of, of wearing a mask. But yeah. And again, I think this idea that we ideally don't want this to become a disciplinary issue for students or for staff. I see there's another question, you know, around the staff adherence to masks. We obviously have slightly different tools to use around compliance with, with students versus staff. And so, so absolutely, you know, whatever expectations there are of staff around the health screenings that they'll be expected to be, you know, participating in mask wearing, things like that. I, I again, hope that it does not become a disciplinary issue, but it, it certainly, we are, we are considering the HR ramifications for, for this as well as the, you know, act having the, the supports we need to make sure folks have the gear that, that will keep them safe. So thank you for bringing that up as well.
So we have a question. We have, we have a few questions. Let me get up to them. From Ms. Kathy Bussay. I apologize if I was pronouncing that incorrectly. I'm going to head down to the bottom of her comment where she states her questions. So she, she has some questions about, like if some, so she, she's saying that she would like for her senior to be able to attend high school in the fall. However, if someone were to contract COVID-19 that's in her class, you know, she understands that everything would have to be shut down and cleaning would have to take place. And so then there would be like a lot of back and forth. And so she is asking if we've discussed this and considered this as well. And then also time off for teachers, staff impacted and them not being penalized for being ill. Have we discussed that? And then will the need for parent advocates be needed to help with the load the schools will now endure because of future guidelines? I can, I can address the first two questions. So our assistant superintendent Roxanna Meacham has been doing a lot of work around answering those questions. Teachers will not be penalized if they need to take sick leave. I also understand that there's also a special category. It's sick leave for COVID-19 that they can take as well. And then if, if a, a staff member runs through all of that, then there's still going to be some exception made for that staff member. Roxana's talked about this. That's, that's the good thing. The unfortunate thing is she's talked about this during meetings that we've had on Zoom. And the problem is our meetings are so long that we're having difficulty uploading them to Facebook. Every time Ed tries, he gets fussed at by Facebook because Facebook is telling them that it's too long. So he's working on that right now. Excuse me, but we've talked about that during our work sessions, during our school board sessions and that's, that's not an issue. As far as the last question about like parent advocates, I, I don't know. I guess, could we, could we unmute? Ms. Ms. Bussay and, and see if she can kind of expound upon that a little bit more for us. So I think I just need a little more, a little more information on, I guess, what that vision is that she's having that, that brings that question out. Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. It's Kathy Bussy, but no worries.
Thank you. I apologize. Thank you.
You're fine. No, you're fine. No. So basically what I was, you know, asking or trying to get a consensus of is I am a very involved parent in the community. I have already had a graduate. She actually just finished college and then now this will be my last senior. And then they have a little brother who will be in middle school. So I know there's so many of us that are still hands-on and want to continue to support the school in any way possible. Whether it's volunteering or if, you know, say student, and I know teachers get substitutes, everything like that, but sometimes it gets, becomes a financial burden to the schools as well. And if they know they have a handful of, you know, parents who are willing to chip in and, you know, help out with grading or mentoring or even just volunteering, being some type of support, not only to the teachers, but maybe even to the students. And that could be considered, being that we're going in this uncharted waters going forward, even currently and going forward. So that's kind of the conversation that I was hoping the district is considering.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that.
No problem.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of the challenge right now is obviously we're, we're considering return scenarios that really tightly restrict any non-staff and, you know, current students in the building. So I think you know, that is interesting to think about how we can mobilize our, our parent supporters and parent advocates in ways that would look different than being, you know, onsite in our buildings, you know, even the parents who, you know, may have, have historically shown up to, you know, eat lunch with their own kid and just provide another, you know, friendly face in the, in the lunchroom or something like that. So, but yeah, I appreciate that creativity, that out of the box thinking there. And yeah, we'll cer, we'll certainly we'll certainly share that with, with the district. So, thank you. I see Kathy, it looks like you also had a question in the chat about signage and visuals. And, and I think that's a great, it has some connection to the question about are there additional expenses that the district is thinking about incurring? While our school board meeting video might not be online yet, you could still access the documents that have been shared in school board meetings on our board docs page. And so at our, we've had a lot of meetings recently. I think it was actually just at last, last week's budget, final budget approval meeting for this, the school year that started July 1st. There was a presentation of our fiscal year 2021 budget that included a specific slide pulled out to showcase the additional costs that we're projecting at this point. We have been asking Ed and the rest of the admin team for the past couple of meetings about any additional support that may be needed in the communications space. And so certainly taking on some additional support to help us with the development of signage, the development of, of visual cues that'll be necessary in the buildings and at entrances and things like that. So we, we have put some additional budget towards, towards that. You know, to the, the question about subs and, 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 you know, having enough support. I mean, one of the requests that we, the board approved last week was, as you know, we have nurses in every one of our school buildings and the idea of hiring a fourth nurse this year who would be able to help take some of the support load off of our building level nurses, but could also fill in as a sub if, you know, if a nurse was out sick or, you know, needed to, to be out for some sort of reason. So, so that idea of having even, you know, not only classroom backup, but some of the communications and health support backups are certainly on our minds. And, and yeah, I mean, we are, we are absolutely looking at the sub issue and trying to make some, some plans. I think as many of you who are connected to education may know, we contract with an organization called Kelly Subs. And, you know, they pretty much only provide subs for, you know, school districts around the region. They're working on their own contingency plans right now too that we're aligning with. So yes, these are, these are topics we're, we're mulling over as well.
Kind of to piggyback on the discussion on the budget, Nick asked about the significant, if there were significant additional costs to the district. Yes. But, but because we have Chris Holzer and he's done a fabulous job with managing the district's finances. It's, it's not, it's not difficult for the district to take care of those costs. And those costs range from personal protective equipment to warming, warming trays for, for lunch food and I guess like carts to push those trays on. Because we have to have a totally different way that, to serve lunch. So that's just like the span of everything that like Roxana has been working through. Chris has been working through. So yes, it is additional cost, but it's covered. And I'm very thankful for people that work in central office. They are amazing. All right. Good question. Okay, so Kim Gifford asks, what will recess look like moving forward?
Yeah, Kim, I think like you, we all value the ability for our kids to get the wiggles out, that we know physical activity is really critical for brain development and the ability to be able to learn. We are looking, you know, at a lot of different things. You know, I think in, in some similar ways that you know, arrival and dismissal times might end up slightly staggered. I think, you know, we can probably imagine a scenario where this is, you know, is staggered pretty dramatically so that again, we can maintain some of these safeguards like staple groups of kids together all day. And the ability to social distance. So, so yes, there, there's no plans to take recess or, you know, physical activity breaks out of the schedule. What exactly they look like, I think is continuing to evolve. And, you know, certainly if you have specific ideas or, you know, research that you've seen, you can absolutely share it with, with us or with Dr. Hebenstreich. I think potentially one of the I don't know, benefits of school not starting until August is that we are going to have the ability to kind of learn from what some of our summer camps, like the Y or even some of the region's early childhood education centers that have opened to essential workers or to all families during this time are learning. Because especially, you know, those programs that are certain three, four, five-year-olds are, are still needing to make sure that those kids get outside, get to run off some energy and things like that. So we'll be continuing to kind of watch and see what's been happening locally, continuing to watch the best practices and the research that's coming from national organizations and tailor that to what makes sense for our spaces and, and our situation.
I recall Roxana talking about that. And I know that she was explaining that there would be like cohorts even within classrooms and that recess would look like, you know, you're staying with your, your cohort. You eat lunch with that group. You have recess with that group. But like Katie just said, like, everything is fluid. One week we're, we're talking about, okay, so this is what we're going to do. And then the next week we have a mandate for face masks for, you know, children nine and then going up. So I'm sure that's, that's going to change. And like Katie said, we'll keep looking at it so we can figure out what we can do when the time comes for children come back. Should they choose, if the parents choose to have their children back. And I guess let me clarify that statement. I know that there are some concerns about the options that have been discussed. They've not been finalized, but there are two options that Roxana Meacham has presented to the board. And one is that parents could choose to stay home with their children and have their children stay home. However, their children would have distance learning. It'll be online learning. And Roxana has looked into a program that is actually, I think, being done in Columbia, Missouri. So she's looked into that. Chris Holzer has looked into the pricing of that and looked at the budget for that as well. And then the other option is you can choose to allow your child to go back into the building. And then we are working on social distancing within the building. So just wanted to clarify that last part. And if anybody has any questions or concerns about that, they are welcome. Yeah, so Siobhan asked, any conversations related to one-way hallways and travel paths to help with social distance? I recall Roxana talking to us about that as well.
Yeah, again, I think it's in the conversations around, you know, do, do students circulate or do teachers circulate? And if students are circulating, how do we do that in a way that again, limits interaction with their non-stable groups or, you know, allows for social distancing? So yes, I think that's all all on the table. I see that Kathy just put in the chat wondering how this works in middle school and high school. So, I mean, I think one thing you can be assured of is that there are slightly different plans being prepared for our sixth grade and younger students versus our seventh grade and older students. We recognize that it is possible in our, you know, sixth grade and younger for the same group of students to stay together essentially all day and for teachers to rotate. We understand there's some ability to do that in the middle school. There's really, you know, a very, a, a big challenge with doing that in the high school based on every student having their own unique class schedule. And so we also recognize that the high school has some, some crowding issues already that again, thank, thank you, community for supporting Prop E to help us alleviate that, but we're not going to be able to alleviate that immediately. So considering some other ideas there around the possibility of, of staggered attendance days for, for groups of high school and possibly middle school as well. So again, that is one of the ideas that is on the table right now around not trying to shove all 450 high school, middle school students back into the building all at the same time for five days a week, every week. Hopefully that doesn't come as too much of a shock to folks on this call. That you can imagine some sort of situation where our, our older teens are a little bit more self-sufficient with some learning pieces and are still offered the ability to interact with teachers and peers in the classroom setting as well.
We have a question from Cindy. With the idea of cohorts within a class, will there be consideration of making sure each child has at least one friend within their cohort if possible? I don't know. And the reason why I say that is because I think that that's that's so detailed as to what the teacher is going to do with, with their classroom that I don't want to tell you an answer which may be wrong. So I think that what I would propose is, that's a, at first, that's a good question. And I would propose that you have that conversation with your child's teacher. Because I think that's the best person to get that, that answer from. So definitely not trying to not answer your question. I just want to be honest with you. Like, that's so detailed. I'd hate to tell you something wrong.
Yeah. And Nikki, I think that there is, I, I Yeah. And Nikki, I think that there is, I, I would just acknowledge that I think that our admin team is thinking about those sorts of things though. I mean, one of the, one of the decisions that the school board did make last week also, and hopefully this isn't news to anybody who this directly impacts, but we are, we are post, or we are pausing our first friends program for, for two-year-olds this coming school year. Primarily to offer or have that space available for spreading out our preschool, our existing preschool students a bit more to allow for social distancing. And so one of the, the things is, you know, we're going to be repurposing the classroom that was used for first friends as a new preschool cohort. What was committed to us last, last week was that, that, that new classroom of preschool students would be comprised of students who are all frankly new to the preschool program, that we wouldn't be breaking off existing classes where, you know, your, your child maybe has had, you know, Miss Betty as their, as their teacher. And, you know, we wouldn't be pulling kids out of Miss Betty's room to form a new cohort. We are actually creating the new cohort out of students who are enrolling for the first time in the preschool program. So again, I think that our, our administrators are being really thoughtful about the social and emotional impacts of this time and how the decisions that we're making at the district level and even at the classroom level enhance that or detract from that.
We have a very good question from Beth Vesper. The plan you just described, what are the accommodations for pivoting to remote for the face-to-face students? When, if there is a closure, will they stay with their own teacher online? Will remote students have a consistent MRH teacher?
Great question. So again, thanks to everybody who's on this call who filled out our, our parent survey. And if you encouraged your, your children to fill out the student survey, thank you. Because we have some really rich data from, from the surveys that are informing, again, a lot of the plans that our, our district team is making. And so obviously, one of the big challenges that we heard from our families about the spring was the use of our online platform, It's Learning. And I will tell you that It's Learning is actually a state-of-the-art. It's a pretty fancy, you know, online portal. It's a, it's a really an exceptional tool that affords us the ability to really track what content students are accessing, what learning outcomes students have mastered and where there are existing gaps in what's been offered or what, you know, still needs to be learned. That said, our kids, our families, and even our teachers weren't fully prepared to use that platform in the way that we asked them to use it beginning in March of this year. And so I think part of what we intend to do in, in the, in a blended model where we recognize if conditions are safe, we are in-person. And if conditions change and there is the need to put a classroom or a building or the whole district into, you know, quarantine, that our kids and our teachers and our families are much more familiar with the online portal and how it works. And that there will be more use of that online portal in the in-person classroom settings. So, you know, your, your child will hopefully have opportunities to practice using that portal, using the technology before they have to bring it home and use it with you. One of the other expenses that the board approved last week specific to COVID was the purchasing of some additional Chromebooks to make sure that we have devices for all students at third grade and older. I'm not, I can't remember if we, if it's third grade or older or if we went even younger than that. It's possible we did. But again, recognizing that many of our kiddos were not as comfortable with using the Chromebook at home because it wasn't already something they were using one-to-one like our high school students were. That our elementary students especially need the training in how to use the tool, that, that physical hardware, as well as training on how to use the, the software tools. And that we are building in support for that as part of what in-person learning is going to look like.
I want to make sure that we address Beth's question. Her last one, will remote students have a consistent MRH teacher? And the answer from conversations and discussions that Roxanna has had with us is yes. There, I understand teachers are going to be like on double duty in a sense because they're going to be working on lesson plans for children that come into their classroom. But then also they're going to be tracking the students that are assigned to their class but are doing remote learning or social, I guess, distance learning. They're going to be tracking those students as well. And so, yes, you will. The only thing is you wouldn't, any child that is at home and doing distance learning won't get to see their, their teacher as often as the students that go into the classroom. Correct me if I'm wrong though on that.
Yeah, Nikki, I think there's a slight, there's a slight caveat to that, I think, or a slight revision to that. So again, um, we are, we're considering, Nikki already acknowledged there's a, a fully virtual curriculum out of University of Missouri, St. Louis, University of Missouri system out of Columbia, Missouri, that we are considering purchasing and purchasing licenses for to use. So again, families who need to, for health reasons or, you know, comfort level reasons, want to select a virtual semester would be opting into a fully virtual semester. There will be teachers of MRHs that are assigned to support those virtual students. But to, I, I think to say what, what Nikki was saying, we actually don't think that it is sustainable to request that our teachers manage both an in-person group of students and an online group of students. That there will be teachers specifically assigned to support fully online students. And there will be a group of teachers assigned to support our in-person students. If those in-person students then get quarantined, you know, because of a, an outbreak, those teachers would shift with that group of students to, to the virtual format as well. There are trade-offs that have to happen. Our teachers are people too, with their own children and their own families and their own health concerns. So working to balance both the needs of those humans and those people that we care a lot about, along with the needs of our families and our students.
So let me, okay, let me make sure that, that that's clear. Because, uh, let me see, we have, we have a question from Cara. Cause she, she wanted clarification as well. So the options that we are discussing with the online and in-person, if let's say my child has Ms. Rothenberg, but we choose to keep him home and do distance learning, will my child be able to interact with Ms. Rothenberg at all?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would think that we can certainly, you know, set up opportunities for, you know, kids to, you know, Zoom or, or email or, you know, phone call with, with their teachers or other staff support to them. I know we have students that really latch on to particular custodians or particular cafeteria workers or Discover Club staff. Obviously, we, you know, we want to maintain those opportunities to connect. I think the, the thing that we are not going to ask our teachers to do is to manage an in-class
Right.
and learning environment as well as a, in a fully virtual learning environment, both at the same time.
Right. And so, yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that well. Because I thought that that's what Roxanna said, that it would be too much, but there still would be opportunities for students who need to learn from home to interact with their teachers. So it's not just going to be someone that is running that online program that's, you know, not, not a teacher.
Yeah. And, and the online program, I think I see a question in the chat too. The online program, while it's MU's curriculum and platform, we would be operating that with MRH teachers. So it wouldn't be strangers running it. It might not be the teacher that your child has already, you know, been with if they're in the middle of their loop. But, you know, this is also a way that we're able to offer some, you know, precautions to, you know, I, I obviously for HR purposes, I'm not privy to the specific health concerns of, you know, of our various teachers. But I think the national data is, is proving that about one-fifth of, of teachers in the classroom today nationwide are at high risk for COVID. And so schools all over the country are thinking about how do we accommodate those educators and allow them to work, work from home and, you know, manage a virtual classroom? If that is something that makes sense for them to do. And again, we fortunately have a very skilled superintendent of curriculum and human resources who is, you know, navigating those specific nuances with our, with our staff team right now. So that again, we can make sure that we're helping safety of our teachers as well as our kids' families.
Okay. So I want to make sure like things are not confusing and and our responses are not confusing. And I, and we have a comment from Jennifer who has stated that, that the answer is not clear. So Katie, would you, would you unmute Jennifer so we can kind of like flesh out, flesh that out, flesh that out a little bit more to make sure that everything is, is clear? Cause I don't want anybody to be confused, please.
Hello. Hi. So I just want to be clear, like, I felt like you, you said one thing and then another thing and then agreed with a different thing. So it sounds to me like students that maybe already have their class assignments, who opt to then be remote students, it sounds like they'll have a different teacher managing their remote education experience. So let's say you have Mrs. Rothenberg as your in-class assignment. And then you opt to stay home. It sounds like there's going to be a whole other teacher managing your education process, correct?
Correct.
That's what I wanted to make clear because then it went back and forth and said, oh, but you still have access to them. And so I didn't want people to think that that access to them meant they would be managing their educational experience remotely.
Correct.
Okay.
I think you got it. I think it was clear. You got it.
All right. I just wanted to make sure because I was like, I, you know, it was sort of clear to me, which maybe meant that it was less clear to others. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. All right.
All right. I know we've got just a couple of minutes left. It looks like, again, things are evolving. All of the topics that y'all have brought up today are ones that are being discussed. Some in, in minutia of detail with our administrators and our classroom teachers. And some have been decided already. Again, really appreciate those of you who are expressing your, your concerns, your offers of support and your willingness to kind of help be conduits to information with your, with your neighbors and your friends in the district as well. I think we, again, know that we're going to do the very best that we can with the information that we have. And school is still, what, about six weeks away? And so conditions, conditions may continue to evolve. And so again, please know that we appreciate your, we appreciate your partnership on this. And we'll continue to be as transparent and as collaborative as we possibly can be during this time. So we'll capture this chat and share it with our admin team. And look forward to some of you joining the lunch next week with a specific focus on the SSD and Special Education Services in the district. Thanks, everybody. Have a great afternoon.
Thanks, y'all.